All right, thank you. It is six thirty one on January ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome to the first town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting of two thousand and twenty five. As you as a user case will open up with executive session and then we'll move on to an open session at seven thirty. I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the agenda for the executive session.
Good evening. We'll begin with item number one, which is meeting with town council and executive session. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A and three, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam four forty nine Mass. Four forty four parentheses, two thousand and seven. To discuss thirty one Hunting Lane, forty one North Main Street, Ikele Lebaski Atel versus the Town of Sherburne. Land Court number twenty one M I S C P S zero 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 one, three, nine, three parentheses H P S. And thirty one Hunting Lane LLC versus Sherburne Board of Appeals. Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty one dash oh five. And forty one North Main Street LLC versus Sherburne Board of Appeals. Housing Appeals Committee number twenty twenty one dash oh six. Pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A and seven. To comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. Of federal granted aid requirements, specifically the public records law. General Law, Chapter forty, Section seven, twenty six. To discuss privileged communication from town council regarding litigation. Item number two is a strategy session. To prepare for contract negotiations with non bargaining union employee. Pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A and two for the police lieutenant. Item number three is strategy session. With respect to collective bargaining pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A. Subsection three, Sherburne Police Association, Local one fifty eight of the Mass Coalition of Police. AFL C I O Police Officers Union. Item number four is a strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations. With non bargaining union employee pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A and two. Regarding the D P W Director.
All right, thank you very much. Do you have any motions or amendments relative to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as read by the Assistant Town Administrator.
All right. Oh, one second, sorry. A collective vote, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I am as well. Oh, I do want to say, as Chair, I declare an executive session is warranted for the four men, uh, for red agenda items. And with that, we have that vote.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you very much. All right, um, please turn off the recording. All right, welcome to the January ninth, two thousand and twenty five open session, um, component of this Sherburne Select Board Meeting. And again, for those that didn't hear me the first time, when I said it during executive session, welcome to the first Select Board Meeting of two thousand and twenty five. I'll open up by please ask asking the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I have not had any requests tonight for a public comment. Items can be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty eight hours in advance can be added. Item number one is the hearing continuation from the December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four Select Board. Meeting for the cable license. Hearing regarding the renewal of the cable license. Cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Item number two is the recognition. Recognition of the three hundred and fiftieth Celebration Volunteers. Which is Doug Ambrose, Allison Mitchell, Alec Boy. Kevin Delaney, Heidi Doyle, Abby Fisk, George Fisk. Kathy Halanka, Lisa Hudson Walker, Sue McPherson, Bill Miller. Mary O'Hara Moore, Sam Nelson, Melinda O'Neal, Margot Prawicki, and Nihara Raj. Item number three is the consideration. Elder Housing Committee, Pam Douse for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty eight. The Sherburne Cultural Council, Kathy Horgan Die for a term to expire June ninth, two thousand and twenty eight. Then there is the confirmation of appointment for the Director of Assessing for Robert Alfred the Second. Item number five is the review and discussion regarding the outside work policy. Item number six is discussion and possible vote to add the annual town media warrant article, a local recall provision. Item number seven is seven is the F Y twenty six preliminary operating budget review and capital update by Jeremy. Item number eight is the acceptance of a campaign finance money. As donation to the general fund, Jackie Morris. Item number nine is consideration of request from the planning board and public works authorization to spend funds for a D E S A. Separate revenue funds. Addie is not here tonight, but Heidi will be here and Sean Cle will be here to discuss that. The consent agenda is the payroll warrant. A one day liquor license for Pauline Bounds for the Sherburne Library. A new common vix license for Jackson's Kitchen at twenty one South Main Street. And draft minutes from October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. November seventh, two thousand and twenty four. November twenty one, two thousand and twenty four, December fifth, two thousand and twenty four. And December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. The next item is consideration of approval of an intermunicipal agreement for veteran services. Item number twelve is Select Board Reports, and under that is Select Board Hybrid Meeting Discussion. Item number thirteen is the Town Administrator's Report is the Sustainability Core Data. Two thousand and twenty four annual town reports that are due February seventeenth. And the North Sherburne Water Sewer District.
Thank you very much, Diane.
You're welcome.
Before I take any amendments already. A motions relative, I think, um. People received an email from Paul Durensis, he can't make this meeting. He wanted to, um. Defer, um, item number six, he had some opinions on it. Um, my suggestion is we defer the vote, but still have some discussion. Paul could come and watch our discussion and then we'll have more discussion vote. But otherwise, if sometimes we kick these things down the road, they take forever. And I think it's worth us having some discussion without a vote. And again, he can watch it. And at a, at the next date, um, we will already, we'll do it again and he can, uh. Tell us his opinion and perhaps collect the vote at that point as well. If no objection to that, I'll take any motions relative to the agenda.
Move approval.
To approve the agenda as amended, dropping, uh, well, no, we're keeping item six. Yeah, okay. As amended, as not amended.
I second that, uh, emotion.
All right, all in favor, uh, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I am as well. Okay, without further ado, um, first one, going on to the hearing for the license. Uh, we heard back from our council. That, uh, they're not quite ready. And so I'm just going to, uh, ask for a motion to continue the, um. Continue the hearing to, let's look at my calendar. January twenty third. I have a motion relative to that.
Do you need to officially? Open the hearing?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
I don't know how continuance is work, actually.
Do I have to read this whole thing again or whatever? If I'm going to continue it? I don't think so.
No.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. We're having a hearing. We technically are having a hearing. I, I think I would err on the side of reading it myself.
But it was read before. It was read before and other hearings have been too that has not been done. It's been voted to continue as well.
All right. When I make a motion that we continue the cable license hearing regarding the renewal of the Comcast Cable Communications Contract.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
And just to amend your amendment too, I think you have to do a date certain, so it's January twenty third?
Defer to the January twenty third Select Board Session.
Very good. Okay, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I might as well. And apologize in advance, I'm quite stuffed up. I have my head pulled here. Okay, next item, recognition of the three hundred and fiftieth Celebration Volunteers. I'm just going to add a point on to this, which is, this was an excellent year and an excellent celebration. And everything was so well organized and done, all with volunteers. You know, my only regret is that I didn't attend more and I attended as much as I could. It was, uh, so, so much fun of this and just something that really brought the community together. If anyone has comments, um, otherwise I'll read the proclamation.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah, so, um, Mary Moore and Abby Fisk and Heidi Doyle. Can never be thanked enough for their work. Never ever ever be thanked enough. Mary was an extraordinary leader for our committee. I'll speak for myself, I'll speak on behalf of them and I'll speak on behalf of the town, like, just super positive, like. Really a role model for, let's get this done, let's do it well, let's. Do it with a smile on her face, like all the, like, can do, positive. Problems, you know, were easily solved. What kinds of things can we do that will, you know, really include others and, and really worked very hard? To lead us in a way that, you know, we tried to capture all ages. Capture different kinds of events, indoor events, outdoor events, you know, keeping an eye on, you know, keeping it as free as possible. The marketing with Abby, I mean, I could go on and on and on. So I just want to give an extra shout out to our, um, three committee chairs. They really just did a phenomenal, phenomenal job.
Absolutely.
I should, I should add a note that I was in Amsterdam in the very end of October and I let the three of them know that, uh, this coming year is Amsterdam's seven hundred and fiftieth celebration. So I had volunteered them to, to be experienced veterans and go to Amsterdam.
We're catching up. We'll catch you up. Yeah, Marion?
And I just want to add that, that, that closing video is wonderful. And special thanks to Bill Miller and Doug and others that worked on that. It's just so, uh, so fun, short and sweet and funny and cute. So thanks for that.
So, yeah, the video was funny. It was fun. Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation. Instead of reading all fifteen, I'm just going to stick in the names of the people, um, at the beginning here with the names. And, um, apologize again for my, uh, my stuffed up nature. So whereas Doug Ambrose, Alyssa Mitchell. I Coley, Kevin Delaney, Heidi Doyle, Abby Fisk, George Fisk. Kathy Hamaka, Lisa Hudson Walker, Sue McPherson, Hill Miller. Uh, Mary O'Hara Moore. More, um, Sam Nelson, Melinda O'Neal, Margot Prawicki, and Nihara Raj. Longtime residents have served our community with this unwavering devotion to the town of Sherburne. Whereas the aforementioned, along with many other volunteers. Have been instrumental in making Sherburne's three hundred and fiftieth year celebration such a wonderful and memorable program of events each month of two thousand and twenty four. That enjoyed, that was enjoyed by the entire town. The celebration kickoff started on January two thousand and twenty four, followed by the creation of a three hundred and fiftieth movie. A townwide scavenger hunt, antique car show, Sherburne Rocks, Farm Pond Water Fire Display, three hundred and fiftieth parade. Day long outdoor concert and picnic with five live bands aptly named Sherbstock. Concluding with a cocktail reception and dedication of a time capsule to be opened in two thousand and seventy four. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Sherburne, on behalf of its citizens, extending our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to. The aforementioned people for making the Town of Sherburne a wonderful place to live and call home. For helping lead a year long program events. And witness thereof, we have caused to seal this town to be a fix this proclamation on the ninth day of January the year two thousand and twenty five. And each one, we have them signed at the town hall and please, uh, pick up your proclamation and say, and just thank you so much. For your efforts.
Thank you all.
That was fun. We'll do it again in a few years, yeah. Thanks very much, Eric.
So my neighbor is one year older than me. She remembers. The three hundredth and I don't. I think I was four and she was five. The critical thing, so I will try to make the next one. All right, so moving on, consideration of appointments, Elder Housing Committee, Pam Douse for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty eight. Do I have any motions or any discussion relative to this?
I move approval of Pam Douse, uh, to the Elder Housing Committee for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty eight.
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
And I might as well. Thank you. Uh, next up, Sherburne Cultural Council, um, Kathy Horgan Die for a term to expire June ninth, two thousand and twenty eight.
Yep, I'd make the same motion, uh. She, I think it's a renewal and Kathy's been very active and so I, um. Uh, move that we approve Kathy Horgan Die to Sherburne Cultural Council for a term to expire also on, uh, June ninth, two thousand and twenty eight.
Okay, do I have a second?
Excuse me, it's January ninth for her termination date, January ninth, two thousand and twenty eight.
Oh, that's not what's printed on the agenda. That I have.
Yeah, I get June ninth.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the fact sheet it is, okay. It should be January ninth, two thousand and twenty eight. I'm sorry about that.
Well, given that the fact sheet is correct, I believe we can just make that amendment to the, uh, in the motion.
Okay.
Jeff, do you accept that amendment?
I do, yes.
Okay. Okay, um, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I might as well.
Thank you. Both, both came in Kathy.
Okay, next up, uh, for appointment, Director of Assessing, uh, for Robert Alfred the Second. Uh, Jeremy, do you have, would you take the lead in this? Would you have, uh?
Yeah, um, Robbie was going to join us tonight, but, um, I'm not sure if he's on the, the call or not, but. Um, wanted to, uh, just do a confirm, confirmatory, um, vote on the appointment of our Director of Assessing. Robert Alfred. Robbie. Um, the third, uh, here, his resume is in your packet. He comes with a, a lot of experience in the field. He was the chief assessor for the town of Easton, the chief assessor for the town of Norfolk. An assistant collector in the town of Holliston. Um, and has been involved on, uh, a number of various professional boards and committees. So he comes with a, with a lot of experience and, and great, great insights. And we're happy to have him on board. The town's bylaws are a little unclear as far as who is the appointing authority here, whether it's the town administrator or the select board, so. Just out of an abundance of caution, thought the select would should confirm, uh, the appointment.
All right. Well, the thing certainly seems qualified and I think we're lucky to, um. To have him as an applicant or have the. Have him join us.
Maybe may add a little bit more as well. During the, through the search process, the Board of Assessors that were involved. Um, uh, Ed O'Neal, the chief of the, or the. The Chair of the Board of Assessors was involved in the interview process and, uh, helped with, you know, searching down recommendations and so forth, so. The Board of Assessors are also supportive of this appointment.
Oh, that's huge. That's good. Thank you. Are any discussion or emotions relative on this board?
Yeah, I would make a, a motion that we confirm the appointment of Robert Alfred the Second, uh, Director of Assessing.
All right, do I have a second?
And I second.
All in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I am as well. Very good, going through here. Um, review discussion regarding outside work policy. Jeremy Marset.
Yes, the. Upon the recommendation of town council, um, this, this policy has been brought forward. They've helped draft. The, the policy, a copy of which is in your agenda packet. Um, council is suggesting that to, to formalize this, which the policy is essentially. A clarification or reinforcement of the state conflict of interest law. And how it applies to the town of Sherburne, um, sort of setting a little bit more, um, details or procedures for compliance. Uh, but the council recommends that. Um, this be brought forward at the next town meeting. To be adopted and included as a section, a new section, uh, within the Personnel Administration Plan. Um, it would be a new section thirty two entitled Policy on Outside Employment. They also, uh, town council also, um, believes that, um, per the, the. Uh, duties of the Personnel Board, um, that, um. In the interim, um, that this policy may be, uh. Brought forward and implemented as an administrative policy in the interim, um, pending approval at town meeting.
Okay. And just to clarify, it's not, this is anything punitive or anything like that. It's really just a, just a check and just simply disclosure. That's all this is, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. It's very similar to what other communities do, um, as they, they need to do to comply with the state conflict of interest law. Uh, it's not intended to change, um. You know, any of the current practices, but to clarify, to make it clear.
Okay, very good. All right, any comments or motions, uh, on the board?
I think it's a reasonable and rational thing to do and it's already really part of the conflict of interest. Uh, training that we, we all get, so. I think it's, it's good to have it in writing and clear in our town bylaws.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, um. You need a vote from us to basically. Uh, what to basically?
Not, not, we'd not technically, but sure, a, a show of support would be, would be welcome.
Okay, um, any? Any motions relative to? Support Jeremy to move forward with this?
Yeah.
I'm.
Go ahead, Marion, you want to go?
Okay, my turn. Uh, yeah, I move that we bring, uh, to town meeting a, uh. Just a, just an outside wor- work policy bylaw. To add to our town bylaws.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Well, in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay. Going right through here. Next up is the discussion regarding a, uh, local recall provision. Jeremy, do you want to? Intro this or will we talk about it?
Um. For your information, uh, we compiled. Uh, some examples of communities, uh, special legislation that allows those communities to have a, a recall provision for elected officials. Uh, from our research, uh, a bit over half of the communities in the Commonwealth have such special legislation that allows for. Uh, recall of provisions. Uh, to enact a recall provision, what it would entail would be for a town meeting to authorize its select board to seek special legislation. Um, that special legislation is drafted by the local community and there's some flexibility in that. It's how the terms that. You know, the town would like to include, uh, in that special legislation and then it's brought to the, the general court. For consideration and, and final, um, approval through the, you know, the governor's office to become a special legislation for the town of Sherburne. Um, some considerations, um. Would be i- if the town was to entertain such a recall provision. Would be the quantum of vote to call a recall, um. Vote. Uh, you probably want to make that a fairly high threshold so that it, you know, kind of weeds out. Things that are, you know, punitive or, or not worthy. Some of the samples provided have, uh, in addition to getting. Uh, a number of, of signatures to recall the, the recall that it, that there's a, you know, reason why there's a recall. Uh, also, uh, communities have chosen to have, um. Limited, uh, the recalls to not allow a recall, you know, for some period after somebody's newly elected. And, and not within a certain amount of, of time where the election, uh, term ends. Uh, again, to, that, that's to minimize the amount that, that costs of the town. So that there's not just a, a frequent amount of town elections which do cost the town, uh, funds and resources, so. Um. It's a, a brief summary, Eric, but there's a fair amount of information in the Select Board's packet. The first of which was a study that was conducted for the town of Andover by a consultant that. I think provided a nice summary of some recent, um, uh, such special legislation. And, and some of the terms, so. I'll let it stand at that.
And I'll say like, you know, I support this. I think it's almost shameful. We don't have something like this. There's no check and balances right now. Um. Someone gets, gets elected in and they're, they're in for three years and can kind of do whatever. And boards of like, you know. Three or five people can be pretty influential and, uh, it's something that, you know, I support. I, I. And, you know, I think it's too bad Sherburne hasn't had this. Um. For little details of it, like, you know, I can understand. Um, what is it, you know, not doing a recall in the first six months because if someone gets mad at it and get elected or whatever else. But I wouldn't put an ending to it because a lot of these things, we have boards that are, let's say. Voting on a very time sensitive things. If you have a very destructive person in there, someone unethical or whatever else. That, I mean. I wouldn't let cost really get, I mean, cost is always a factor, but, you know, someone could do a lot of costly damage on one of these. They really can. Far more than the cost of election, so I wouldn't put any kind of end timeframe to it. That's one of the things I was thinking about. So the values thresholds are all sitting around one percent of the voting population. There's one town that was about Sherburne size, I think it was like forty or fifty was there. Their threshold, those are the type of details I mean, I would. We don't have to talk about, discuss now, things like, you know, when Jeremy comes back with a draft for us to consider. Um, and even if you don't support it directly, I do think it's, uh, it should go to the citizens of the town, that the town should, uh. You know, the town meeting should be allowed to vote on this, uh, to hold them back, especially us. It's almost conflict of interest because we'd be affected by this. You know what I mean? So to not support this, it's like the state legislator not supporting an audit on their, uh.
Well, I have a clarifying question if I can. Is this, this applies to both appointed and elected positions? Is that correct?
I thought just elected, but we can make it what we want, really, but I don't know if you could do the pointed. And I don't know if there's a.
We can maybe do it without, without this because we could, we're appointing people, you know, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, in my mind, it was only for elected officials.
Yeah.
Because usually the appointing authority also has the authority to remove the appointed official.
Exactly. Marion?
Yeah, I agree that, uh, this should be part of the citizens' checks and balances. On leaders that, that they, uh, elect. Exactly what the guardrails should be around this. We'll take a lot of discussion and maybe that's not for tonight, but, uh, we have to be careful that. We, we have guardrails against, say, frivolous or. You, you mentioned revenge or people who don't think the decision was the right one for them. Uh, so that's going to be a little tricky, but I think we can. Uh, we can make the bar pretty high for this. Uh, so it would take a pretty extreme, uh, and persistent. Set of problems to, uh, allow someone to be removed, removed from office.
Yeah, I was, I told, uh, someone earlier today when I saw this on the agenda that I also am happier that we have a five person select board. Because previously we had a pretty, um.
Yeah, I know.
Contentious three person select board and two people could basically make the decision.
Right.
You're right. They did.
I, I, and they did, often did. We had some troubles around the year two thousand, and that, as you remember, so. I think. It, 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 it's worth repeating that having a, having to have a, you know, a majority of a five person board. Makes it, uh, much less contentious, I would say.
I think, I think that's why I went five people board, to be honest with you, back years ago, not that long ago.
Yeah.
Because of some of those issues. Yeah, no, like, yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good check and balances and I think it's good, it's an option for the citizens to have. And, uh, like I said, if you don't support it as an individual, I think it's, uh, you know, should be going before the. Town meeting to do this. And like you said, you wouldn't make it like ten signatures, you know, I mean, that'd be revenge. I'm thinking forty or fifty based on the percentages I saw of the examples. That's the type of thing I'm thinking of and I think. You know, you're not going to get that many people in Sherburne that it's mostly charged and go do something along that, but. The big communities had like a hundred, but those are communities of like thirty thousand. You know, and, um. We're a community of four thousand. And, uh, Jack, how many registered voters are in town? Three thousand and change? Is it over three thousand or under three thousand? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No problem. Um, we have, uh, it's about three thousand active registered voters.
That's what I thought, yeah. So one percent is thirty.
Thirty seems awfully low.
I know, you hired that like forty, fifty, something like that.
Yeah. Uh, but I, I also, I, I, I support this. I'm also, I'm, I'm surprised that we don't have a recall provision. Um, and I, I think that Eric. What you said, I think, is the most important thing, right, is that. Our, our discussion in, I guess, uh, vote at the next meeting isn't as to whether do we support this? Um, passing, it's do we support putting this on the warrant so that? Um. The, so that the citizens can decide and, like you said, we have a conflict of interest being, um, elected officials and this would apply to us, so. Um, to not put it on there, uh, I, I feel like it would be. I don't know, sketchy, you know, I, I. Yeah, I, I mean, it's like, I don't see any reason not to let this go on the warrant, to go through. The advisory, uh, public hearing and to go through a discussion and vote at town meeting.
Yes, bad optics, as they say. All right, um, any other discussion?
The devil will be in the details of this, or, and that will take up next time.
Absolutely. All right, look forward to discussing again more, I think, on the twenty third. All right, without any further ado, we'll go on to the next item, uh, F Y twenty six preliminary operating budget review and capital update. This is a guessing part with the more. Substance of, uh, agenda items today. Uh, Jeremy Marset.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Actually, before I do, I see Robbie is, is joined us, um, maybe, uh, you'd like to, to. Virtually meet him, um, Robbie, um, welcome and. The Select Board a few moments ago did. The select word a few moments ago did confirm your appointment as the director of assessing.
Thank you. I'm trying to get my uh picture to work, my video, but for whatever reason. It's not right now. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Nice, nice to meet you virtually.
Nice to meet you all. Uh, I I've been in Sherburne for one week and uh so far it's been very enjoyable. Uh, even with the Bateman season. It's still been uh very enjoyable. Everyone's been very nice.
Well, it's great to have you aboard and uh and thank you very much for taking the position.
Well, thank you for offering it to me.
Your impressive resume and experience, so we're we're excited to have you aboard and look forward to working with you. Thanks, Robbie.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Robbie. Okay, back on to the budget. Jeremy, I think it's on you.
Yep, um, thank you, Eric. Um, I do have a couple of slides to share, um, just to go through this. In a timely fashion. So, uh, just put together a summary of. The bud- budget rollup memorandum that was published earlier this week with the summary budget and the expense revenue format. That's basically the rollup of all of the submitted budgets um that that were received by the finance director and myself. On the pot process we followed was very similar to last year. Uh, you know, working with uh the advisory committee. Um, and piggybacking on advisory committee's recommendation letter or or guidance letter. Uh, we have assisted uh the advisory to roll up the budgets into one. One uh one place, so you can see how it all lines up. Um, and that was summarized in a budget memorandum uh that was also discussed last night before the advisory committee. Uh, that process really is is not so much enabled by uh the town's um. Bylaws and that the by- your your bylaws are fairly silent on. The responsibilities of of various budget makers or who owns the budget. Uh, it it um gives some some broad guidance, but it it really doesn't give any details as far as ownership of of. The town budget and and timelines and deadlines. Uh, what does give some guidance, however, are the uh town. Fiscal guidance policies that were adopted in two thousand twenty-one by the select board and advisory committee. Uh, a copy of which were included in the budget memorandum summary that was uh sent around last week and. Those policies are also published on the town's website.
Can you uh, I'm interrupting you. Can you go to presentation view or whatever? This is small. I don't know if. Is this in PowerPoint? I can't tell what it's in.
I think he's showing his uh complete.
Sorry about that.
That's good. Sorry to interrupt.
You haven't really, you didn't miss any meat yet, so. But in in every of the uh fiscal guidance policies do provide some guidance and and were adopted uh by the select board and. Advisory committee uh as guidance and best practices for budget development and do uh ask that. Uh, budget makers submit to the finance director their got their budgets uh by December thirty-first, so. That's really the sort of the basis of of doing this rollup. The financial guidance policies, some general guiding principles that are in your policies here, some of the more more key ones are shown here. Uh, and the advisory committee's guidance uh for this year was a two and a half percent caller from non-union employees. And essentially a level service for expenses, uh however, with a goal, a strong goal to to level fund. And with that. The here is a rollup summary of all of the budgets uh submitted by the various budget makers, um. Including uh the local schools, the regional schools. Um, all of the town government departments and committees. And uh and also including the undistributed expenses. There are essentially three major categories in the town operating budget, that education. Um, municipal services, town government and undistributed expenses. The undistributed expenses really could be allocated amongst all of those uh school and town government, but. The town chooses to aggregate those into one budget called. Um, you know, undistributed expenses, those would be health insurance coverage, uh the Middlesex County Retirement. Um, assessment, debt service, um, things that apply globally, property insurance for the community. Um, that that sort of thing. So, in summary, um. You can see the version uh one of the school budgets from the local, from Sherburne uh elementary schools. Uh, was submitted with a two point four three percent increase. The regional school budget. Version one was submitted with a two point seven nine percent increase. And in the education category, you'll see that the major increased percentage wise is attributed to the Tri-County Regional School. And that this uh FY twenty-six will be the first year that the debt service will be affected in the assessment. Uh, the debt service on their new project. So that that accounts for that forty-nine thousand dollar increase in that the assessment is. What um they're projecting to be Sherburne's share of the debt assessment. They're forecasting that there will be five students at Tri-County, so there that um is also reflected in the assessment for Tri-County. Uh, town government, that's a rollup of all the town government um departments. In aggregate, that's a four point six six percent increase. Uh, I'll get into a little bit more detail in in a following slide on what goes in, what what kind of feeds into that and what some of the budget drivers are. Undistributed expenses. Um, major budget drivers there are the health insurance, which we've talked about a little bit in the past. Uh, our carrier uh is suggesting we carry a ten percent increase in the premium costs. However, uh Dev was, did a nice analysis of. Actual usage of and who, you know, the positions that are taking um town uh benefits. And so we were able to, even though that we're factoring a ten percent increase in the rate for the premium rates. Uh, we were able to only uh increase the budget by six point two one percent to. Uh accommodate our our estimate of folks that and some safety factor of folks that will be taking benefits. Hopefully, in the coming weeks, we'll get a better refinement. Generally, by the end of January, we'll have a another guidance uh. Out from uh the insurance carrier. Generally, that guidance goes down, meaning the percentage increase goes down, so hopefully the health insurance line item will get refined lower. In in a month or so.
Can I interrupt you briefly here?
Sure.
Uh, just on the health insurance, um, uh, you said basically Deb ca- uh. Came up with an estimate based on actual usage. Do we know sort of our confidence level in in whatever parameters were applied to? To come up with those estimates?
Yeah, it's it's a it's a pretty high confidence level. Deb can speak to the details if if you wish, um, Deb?
Yeah, I I what I did was I took what we're using right now, how many employees we have, and then I built in a buffer of about. I think it was six uh additional employees, so I think six, give or take, is pretty reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
It's comfortable. It's comfortable. I mean, it's, you know, it's one of those things that, yeah, we're not gonna be able to take credit like that year over year, but. It's a good thing to do uh periodically and it seemed like the time to do it now and and thank Deb for doing that.
Yeah, no, it's, I just know early in the sort of budget season, you know, there are. Certain variables that you just have to plug in there and we, you don't, it's, they're going to change over the next couple of months and you're just not sure. Where they're gonna go, so you know, sometimes things go up from where you think, but. Ideally, you're targeting everything so that it's not gonna go up from your your initial estimates, you know.
Well, that includes us discussing tonight, Stephen, some union contracts that are coming up also, so they have to have that factored in.
Yeah, that's true.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great points. Um, moving on to the the Middlesex County Retirement Assessment. That generally runs about six percent increase year over year. However, this year there was um. From uh previous, so the member communities of the the retirement system did vote a one-time cola increase. And the cost of that is reflected now in this assessment, so it's. Why it's a higher uh percentage increase this year in addition to the the six percent increase to help cover the unfunded liabilities. There's some adjustment to help fund that that one-time cola adjustment for retirees. And as it all rolls up, um, the the appropriate, under this draft. Uh, of budgets submitted would be an overall increase of three point seven three percent um for the budgets voted at town meeting. Um, if you recall, last year at this time, um, a similar time when we talked about budgets at this stage. Uh, we were, that number was a five point seven percent increase, so we're we're a little different place than we were last year. With with budgets as they were presented and 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 published currently. Uh, town meeting approved an overall budget change of three point seven six percent last spring, just for reference, so. What is currently shown in the draft here is is similar to um the overall budget increase that was approved at last town meeting.
Did I miss it? What's an other? Did you say it and I did I miss it?
Other would be the other undistributed expenses. That would be, you know, town's property insurance covering. Property and so forth. We've got received, that's a a nice uh thing that we heard. Uh, this week, or actually not this week, uh, last, this month, last month. From my our insurance coverage for property, there's gonna be a zero percent increase for our property insurance coverage and workers' comp coverage. Um, because of our our uh experience has been, we've been doing, so. Uh, they forecast that actually to carry on into FY twenty-seven as well, so that's why there's a zero percent increase.
Well, I hope you factor in the five dollar savings.
Oh, yeah. Of course, uh, no budget is is complete without uh revenue to support it. Uh, as presented um in this rollup. Um, the property tax levy uh would uh increase by three point six eight percent. Um, to cover um the expenses within. Uh, property taxes, as you know, represent about ninety percent of the town's revenue, you know, it's the vast majority of the property of the the revenue that supports your town budgets. Followed um by local receipts and state aid. The local receipts. You'll note there, there we're forecasting a bit more of an increase uh than than prior years, um. Uh, again, um, you know, Deb looked at and the finance team looked at. A forecast of revenues and we're comfortable to to take a little bit of credit uh for an increase in motor vehicle excise tax. Local receipts can be very um externally dependent, right? We don't have much control. It's much. Driven much by the external economy, people buying vehicles, going out to dinner, that sort of thing, so. It's a little out of our controls. We we tend to budget that conservatively. We think this is still conservative but are taking a little bit more credit for local receipts. Which does help offset um any any budget increase from from bearing on your your property taxes. And uh conservatively estimating state aid increase at two percent. Of course, that's a very small percentage of your budget, so if that that changes up or down, it doesn't adversely affect your budget much. Um, here is the calculation of the levy limit, essentially, you know, how property uh prop two and a half works. You start with last year's levy limit, that two point nine, uh twenty-nine point eight million dollar number. You add in a two and a half percent increase, you add in new growth. We're uh forecasting a new growth number of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's essentially about eighteen million dollars of new growth um value. Which is 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 fairly average. It's based on the average that the town of Sherburne seen. You know, that that number can be hard to estimate, but we're we're comfortable with that number. Um, it is relatively low compared to other peer communities as far as new growth. Sherburne's new growth tends to be a. A little bit lower than 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 other um uh similar communities.
Quick question, is that factoring some some of the the loss of revenue we've had with um some properties going to conservation and stuff like that? Is that factored into that two forty?
It it would, that's not where that would be factored in, Eric. It would be factored in in your tax rate. So, it it is essentially your your tax rate would then, that lost revenue was carried by other properties is what happens.
Okay, so new growth is true new growth, not like net new growth with net loss or whatever, okay?
Yeah, this is net new growth, not, doesn't have any bearing on that, those reclassification of properties.
Okay.
So that that then sets your levy limit for FY twenty-six. You add in debt exclusions, and as you know. Uh, most of the large capital items that are borrowed are debt excluded. That's been the the practice of up Sherburne. That gets added on to the levy limit to give the maximum allowable levy. And then um that rollup budget that I just showed you on the last slide. Uh, comes in at three point two million. Um, which is less than the maximum allowable levy, so as presented. This budget would leave an excess capacity number of six hundred and eighteen thousand. That is a slight reduction from where it currently sits. Here's the a history of your excess levy capacity. It's currently at seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So the budget is presented for FY twenty-six, does utilize excess levy capacity to fund. Um, uh, but modestly reduces the excess levy capacity down to six hundred and eighteen thousand. And that's, that's certainly a number that. You should consider and and monitor and um, you know, with your your annual budget and and that. Once your excess levy capacity reduces to zero. Then your year-over-budget increases are governed entirely by prop two and a half, that two and a half percent increase plus new growth. Um, short of doing an operational override.
Yeah.
Here is the, a brief overview of where um where all the the town budget is allocated, so of that FY twenty-six budget, where where would that go? Functionally, um, fifty-eight percent of that is directly attributable to the schools or education. About twenty-five percent is attributed to uh public works, uh public safety, police fire and general town government. And the remaining twenty-five percent is that uh undistributed expenses, insurance, benefits, debt service, uh various transfers. I would say that that undistributed expenses does, um, you know, if it were to be allocated. Um, a little less than half would be allocated towards the schools and a little more than half would be allocated towards municipal services. Now diving in a little bit deeper on the municipal side of the budget and where um the budget increases are. Um, just a, just a little summary there of the overall increase on the education side of things, really not all of those. Um, but the the school, uh, local and regional schools do publish a detailed budget, so they have those budget um. Documents have a lot more detail if folks are interested to to dive in, see what's driving their budgets. But on the municipal side. Town government increase of the four point six six percent amounts to an increase of three hundred and eighty, eighty-nine thousand dollars. Most of which is in salaries, there's a two hundred sixty-four thousand dollar increase in salaries. And a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase in expenses. Of that four point six six percent, if you were to exclude. The eighty-one thousand dollars that's attributed to the regional uh communication or regional dispatch. Which essentially is a is a must fund. It's a it's a contract the town has that. It's the first year the town needs to pay that annual assessment. Kind of a have-to-do. And the veteran services officer, the that net increase of the budget is ten thousand. If you exclude those two items. Then the town government increases three point six percent, just to put uh things in perspective a little bit. And overall, the under-surveyed expenses have a five point three percent increase. We talked about that earlier. And just some some of the the bigger picture, bigger items, I guess, of of budget drivers for the town government salaries. That does include a two and a half percent core adjustment for non-union employees. It includes the current obligations for the public works union and the police union. It funds the conservation agent and town planner position that she adds. Uh, a little, a little time towards the town planner position. It includes some increases in call fighter firefighter support and additional EMT coverage for the fire and ambulance budgets. Uh, funds the IMA with all ball hole and midfield for the shared veteran services officer. And also increased uh adds the requested budget increase for the libraries to fund. A new position of children's library assistant and adds hours to the current positions of technical services librarian. And circulation supervisor. And the the individual costs of those increase are summarized or presented in the budget memorandum. And the, the individual costs of those increase are summarized or presented in the budget memorandum. If you're curious, you know, the net impact of each of those. And see on the expense side, here's some of the budget drivers on the expense side. Um, some increase in cost for IT, uh, information technology related to cybersecurity and software licensing. Some increase for town building maintenance, um, for the, for town hall, um, building and septic from HVAC. Systems, um, for all municipal buildings, fire alarm services. Uh, carrying costs for the, uh, electric vehicle chargers here at town hall. Um, and, and most significantly carries the funding for the first year of regional dispatch services. So that, that cost, that full cost, um, if it needs to be paid, all it. Um, once it needs to be paid in full, would be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that Sherburne would need to carry. The agreement has a phase in of that full assessment. So this first year is, is fifty percent of fifty percent of the year. So it's a twenty five percent. Um, a, assessment for, for this current year, uh, or for FY twenty six. To be phased in over three years. And the other, you know, beyond the operating budget, town meeting, uh, would be asked to fund some other financial, um. Aspects, including funding, um, additional funds towards the OPEB trusts and the stabilization accounts. So the budget roll up, that expense revenue summary that's included in the bud, with the budget memo. Includes, um, funding the OPEB trust. With two hundred thousand dollars, uh, a hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget, a hundred thousand dollars from free cash. That's been. Uh, that's similar to last year. Uh, also includes, uh, five hundred thou, uh, fifty thousand dollar contribution to general stabilization. And a hundred thousand dollars to capital stabilization. And using utilizing about four hundred thousand dollars in free cash for the, um, capital budget. And. That's, that's the summary and I'd like to get your. Your feelings and, and guidance on how you might want to review some of the select board budgets, um. I think you, you may want to consider reviewing, um, at least the major departments of police, fire, public works. The IT budget does have a, a little increase as well that you may want to consider, but. All of the other, uh, budgets that typically roll up under the select board are, are within, uh, advisory guidance.
All right, I guess you mind, uh, maybe turning off the chair. Okay, and just any, uh, reactions? Any questions, comments from, from the board here?
Uh, I guess I'm cautiously optimistic about the budget. I mean. You know, you, usually the initial version of the budget comes in. Pretty high and then, um, drops slowly over the next couple of months. So the fact that we are. Uh, beginning the season with a three point seven percent increase, which is approximately what our actual budget increase was, um, for fiscal twenty five. Um, that's a good sign, um, but I do also wonder if that is. Simply because of, um, pressure that, I don't know, perhaps Jeremy or, and or advisory, uh. Has placed on the budget makers to be like. Maybe don't shoot for the moon in your initial budget and give us a more reasonable starting point. And so that might mean that the entire budget isn't going to drop very much. Over the course of the next couple of months, um, you know, I. The, I think the most, uh, salient thing that you showed was the graph of the, um, excess levy capacity and. You know, we are continuing on a downward trend on that and, uh. Um, it, it feels like inevitably we're going to, uh, be looking at. Um, an operating override in the next year or two, um. And I'm not, I'm not sure how to avoid that without actually cutting services, um, but. You know, I, I think we're avoiding that at least, um, for fiscal twenty six, which is good, but. It would be good to start coming and especially. I think the other thing that you mentioned near the end where the, um, regional dispatch. It's eighty one thousand dollars this year, but it's gonna be going up to three hundred and sixty or so, right, in two years, um, so. That makes me think that it's gonna be somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars next year. Um, I mean, that's not gonna, that's not gonna help with our plummet towards the, uh. To the levy limit.
You know, kind of on that note, there's more regional dispatches around right now. Does it get competitive? Is there any? Um, like market pressures at any of these? Do you know what I mean? Cause it was just one we signed up.
Yeah, there's two factors. One is what you're saying, but actually a more important factor is. As, uh, uh, they get, Holbrook gets more members to their network. It, it's not an incremental increase in the cost of offering this service. So the, the cost to each member becomes reduced if they have more people. On that, uh, on that one regional dispatch. So you get cost savings from. You know, more efficiency with more towns. So I think that's probably. I don't think they compete with each other because they serve different regions. But I think we'll see more people go to Holbrook. And lower our effective rate. We also have to remember that, you know, we weren't paying anything for the last whatever, three years or whatever. So. We, we really don't look too good complaining about a slight payment this year, so.
And, and when, when you entered into that agreement, there, there was a, a, a cost benefit analysis done. So there, there has been a savings in your police department budget. Um, that hasn't already been factored into the budgets, but you would have been paying more otherwise.
You would pay overtime for, uh, officers to cover this, you know, whenever you couldn't get a dispatcher and. Yeah, that's absolutely true.
Yep.
Um, I, I just, you know, I, I think it would be worthy, worthwhile to have, um, uh, police, fire, public works, um. And IT come before you maybe in, in February, February twentieth. February sixth, you know, being the more significant, um. Budgets, uh, and I think it gives you some more details, but the, uh, on the, the regional dispatch, but. It is, it's my understanding there, there's. Um, some of the more recent, recent regional dispatch centers that have been created are, um. Are getting a, a continuous, uh. Perpetual funding from the Commonwealth, which is different than Holbrook. So there is a, a fair amount of behind the scenes legwork happening to, to get, um. Nine one one funds to, um, offset the assessments that Holbrook, uh, charges. To be more equitable with some of the, the more recent, uh, regional dispatch centers that are, that are developing. So. That's not currently part of our agreement with the town of Holbrook, but. We're optimistic that we might be able to get some ongoing, um, assistance from the Commonwealth to offset the assessment.
That'd be great. Uh, Marion?
You're muted, Marion.
If that assistance from the Commonwealth doesn't come through. Or is not, is not what you hope it is for, uh, a relationship with Holbrook. Is it worth shopping around to other dispatch centers? Does it make any sense to do that? I suspect it does not. But, uh.
There's an IMA that cat, that Sherburne and Holbrook have and that has a term to it, so.
Five years.
Both communities could, could renegotiate or, or change that agreement.
Right.
To keep your options open, um, but I would really defer to the, the chiefs on that, on that question.
But remember that the contract wasn't just on operate. They gave us, you can correct me, Jeremy, but they gave us close to four million dollars in capital. Upgrade to the towers, upgrade to the radios. That was not showing up in the operating cost. They gave us capital. Two, as part of it. And we had a lot of equipment that we would have had to fund otherwise perhaps.
Yeah, a lot of communication.
So they're, they're recovering some of that capital. I mean, that came from state sources eventually, but. Part of the operating cost is reflecting the fact that we, we got. Uh, you know, basically a bonus upfront in terms of capital expenditures.
You know, speaking of, um, state aid, uh, the town has done pretty well, I think. Relatively well in getting grants. Uh, and that's another source of income that we don't show and we don't count on. It's sort of frosting on the cake. If we can get it, allows us to do things that we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise, uh, right?
Yeah, and generally those, those grants generally sort of, uh, impact our capital budget more than the operating budget.
Right.
In the, the capital budget that was, that was published a little while back, there was a summary. Of all of the grants, um, over the last several years and it's quite impressive. It's. Um, your staff has done a great job, um, tracking down any, any and all opportunities for, for other folks to pay for things.
I'd like to recognize Dan.
Hey, everybody. I was just gonna pick up on, uh, uh, one of Steve's comments. Um, and that I think, uh, on the school budgets, um, I think, uh. Don Fattori and the, the folks there did kind of get the message, at least to a degree from last year, that. Shooting really high in the early budget creates some, uh, problems for us. So I think. This budget is, this year's budget is tighter than, uh, last year's budget. Uh, so I think, you know, while I think as Steve said, the typical pattern is that the. Budget increase does come down. I expect that will happen, but probably not to the same degree that it did last year. I would also just in terms of looking ahead on school budgets, just highlight that. Those school budget numbers look pretty modest compared to, you know, at least where they were starting last year. And may, maybe they'll come down a little bit. But I'd note that the numbers look modest in part because of one-time changes this year. So. Schools are just now, region is just paying off the borrowing for the middle school. So there was some hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt service last fiscal year in twenty five, zero in twenty six. So one time thing that brings down the percent increase for twenty six. Will not repeat in twenty seven. Um, and similarly for the Pine Hill School, they had some, uh. Kind of one-time personnel retirement things that happened that held that number down that also are unlikely to be repeated in the future. So. In thinking about, you know, going beyond twenty six, the numbers for the size of the increase of school budget that, you know, look, hey, that looks really good. Um, there are gonna be more pressures and in addition, they're gonna be negotiating a new educator contract. So. There are likely to be more pressures coming from that part of the budget. So just a little extra color to pick up on the comment that Steve made about where might we be going in the future.
Thank you, Dan. And I'll say, um. Dan and Jeremy, I mean, this is a, a great presentation, uh, particularly, um, in the past and just before Jeremy's here. And even before, in past ones for decades, I haven't seen such like, you know, ownership of a town administrator on a budget office, just various departments and silos and stuff like that. Thank you for this presentation.
And also, Jeremy, you were talking about, um, us reviewing, uh, police, fire, DPW and IT. Um, just coordinate with Dan, um. I'm, I'm assuming Dan has got a, a, a schedule already made for the budget season. So you, Dan probably already knows when. Police, fire and DPW are coming before advisory. Just try to make sure that they come before us first, before, before advisory.
He said that might be what, February twenty six?
Well, given the, the calendar and, um, and advisory schedule, it, it might be earlier. Maybe it'll be earlier in February than, than later.
Is caucus overlapping with us again? You do it like every year.
Caucus is on the night of March sixth, which you do have a meeting scheduled.
Like, is there somebody that cannot do that anymore? Like they do that every year. It seems like they, they make it the same as us. Be nice if, um. Cause we have a very predictable budget, a predictable schedule. Oh, either way, all right. Uh, any other questions or comments about the budget? Okay, signal. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Jeremy. Move on to the next one to, um, acceptance of campaign finance money as a donation to the general fund. Jackie.
Thanks, Eric. Can I just make one comment? I couldn't find my raised hand about caucus. Um, it hasn't one hundred percent. Been confirmed, but traditionally it is always the first Thursday in March.
Okay.
Okay.
I remember caucus being in February, I think, um, even in recent years.
That might have been due to COVID or something. No, but it's, 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 um. It's been in March, the last couple of years. I'd have to go back and look at the history. Um, but traditionally it is the first Thursday in March. Um, so anyway, so campaign finance laws allows committees or candidates to no, donate their unspent funds. Um, to the town generals fund or other choices. And the support Sherburne CPA committee has four hundred and sixty three dollars and one cents. Um, left over in unspent funds and they would like to donate it to the town's general fund. So, um. I need you guys to vote to accept the four hundred and sixty three oh one from the support Sherburne CPA committee.
Wait, but Paul's, Paul's not here to accept that.
I know. I know. What are we gonna do? We'll have to defer this to, uh, to caucus night or something. All right, any motions relative to this?
Yeah, I move that we, uh, accept the, um, uh, uh. Campaign finance money as a donation to the general fund.
All right, John, second?
Second.
All right, all favor Stephen?
I.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I might as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm moving on. Consider request from the planning board and public works authors for authorization to spend funds from Adessa separate revenue fund. It says Addie, but I don't see Addie here.
It's not here. We got a note about that.
Oh, do we? Okay, I think.
I, I can speak on behalf if you'd like me to start it and Sean can record in. Sure. So, so this is a request, uh. A separate revenue fund was set up last year. By the town that would hold the Adessa payments and we had one payment in July. So this. Fund is currently sitting at twenty eight thousand, one hundred and ninety five dollars and twenty cents. And that money is supposed to be used towards improvements on Western Ave, their traffic safety coming measures. Their group of residents have met several times or communicated with us, you know, the desires to have some things done on the road. And, uh, Sean and Addie May had looked into getting some. Radar speed signs that would be set up. And this is a request for the select board, who is the one that has the authority to spend the funds from this account. To have, we're gonna say up to nine thousand dollars for the installation of two signs in the packet. They have the amounts. The signs were fifty, three hundred and sixty dollars for the two signs. Installation was twenty six, eighty. And then there are some little incidentals such as. Possible permitting fees or other costs that would be associated with the installation. So we'd like to ask for a vote up to nine thousand dollars from this fund.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, uh, very consistent. I remember when I was on the planning board. And this is exactly what it was meant for. And I support the fee, uh, the speed feedback signs. Is there any other questions or comments on the board?
Do you already have locations picked out for where the signs are gonna go?
Uh, generally not the exact locations, but there'll be one, um. After you pass Stevens headed towards Framingham and you start heading down the hill. Certainly that's where people are picking up speeds. There's been a lot of accidents there. And then. Opposite, probably after you pass Fesidon or maybe before Fesidon. Headed towards Brook Street, uh, would, would, the goal is to slow the cars down before they head towards that corner on Brook. And land on the stone wall, which has been a common occurrence.
Yeah. Both, both good locations, absolutely, especially down the hill toward Framingham. Yeah. Me, uh, I pull out a brush shell. It's like you take a life, you know, here.
All right. And these are the same, it's essentially the same signs that we put downtown. On twenty seven and sixteen, but, but probably better locations than those are. Those are part of a complete streets grant. So that, you know, the, the grant kind of decided where they would be, close to the school zone. And whatnot, but would, uh, one thing to keep in mind, those signs. They don't just feed back the speed. They actually log the data. Uh, so there's very valuable data that comes from those. The problem with the data coming from North Main and, and Elliot, if anyone drives through town during rush hour. Um, radar doesn't work real well when the cars are sitting still. So we lose, we don't get good accurate counts. And average speeds get a little skewed when the cars are going five miles an hour past it. Um, it'll be very valuable data on Western Ave that the, you know, the police can certainly react to. Um, during their enforcement.
That's a good point. We have to keep messages like trick, treat, naughty, nice and stuff like that.
Yeah, again, it's, yeah, it's the same system. So when Addie May changes the, the signs downtown, she can start changing the Western Avalants.
Well, that helped on, when we were doing the study of Coolidge, you remember when we had a lot of concern about Coolidge Street also.
Right, and one still remains out there.
Yep.
My wife kept asking me, why, why always says naughty? I said, it says nice if you actually drive a little slower.
Yeah, you can remind her that the, the one near Butler. Yeah, you can remind her that the one near Butler. Every time I pull out of Butler Street, I get told I'm being nice.
Nice. All right. Any questions, comments?
Make a motion that, that we authorize, authorize the expenditure of funds of the Adessa Revenue Fund for this purpose.
Up to nine thousand, whatever, yeah.
Yes, and I second.
Okay, all in favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. All right, good job.
Thank you.
What we have now, we have a consent agenda. Any motions relative consent agenda?
Move approval with consent agenda as listed here, including the draft minutes for the dates listed here.
Wait, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. Hold on one second. All right. Almost, I see the finish line. Almost there. All right, sorry about that. Let's move along to the weather. Consideration approval for, for intermunicipal agreement for Veterans Services. Jeremy?
Thanks, Eric. Well, as you know, Diana Hope has served as the Veterans Agent excellently for, for, for a number of years, but unfortunately due to some recent Veterans Agency Regulations, she can no longer serve in that capacity. She's not eligible to receive the certification necessary to be a Veteran Services Officer. So we've explored a number of options partnering with NADIC, for instance. There's a Metro West Veteran Services Organization we've explored. But the, the most advantageous seems to be teaming with the towns of Walpole and Medfield to, to partner with them through an intermunicipal agreement to share Veteran Services Officer Services. This would include the balance, the term would include the balance of fiscal year twenty-five, this current fiscal year and FY twenty-six and going forward. The costs and salaries for the benefits, cost and salary, cost of salaries and benefits for the Veterans Agent, who would be a Walpole Town Employee, would be shared by the towns of Walpole, Medfield, and Sherburne. And it would be based on the town's overall population, which by the calculation, which makes this agreement attractive to us in that we would, our share would be 13% of the overall costs of that service amounting to $13,800 per year currently. That's been factored into the FY twenty-six budget. We would put forward, if necessary, a reserve fund transfer to fund the cost for FY twenty-five. Both other towns, Walpole and Medfield are supportive. In fact, Walpole Select Board approves the new IMA at their January seventh meeting. And it's on the Medfield Select Board's agenda to vote approval at their January twenty-first meeting. So we're bringing this forward for your consideration and approval.
All right. First, I want to thank Diana Hook for all those years of service she did in this. And it's been awesome with that. So I do want to give her a special thank you, shout out for that.
I have a quick question, two questions. One is in the past year, Diana still was able to do the Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Will she still do that? Or will this new person do that?
Both. So Diana, Diane, all the folks that have traditionally been involved in those events wish to continue doing those events. And the expenses of those events are still incorporated in the town's budget. But in addition, they'll have the help of this new Veteran Services Officer and his assistant. So
Right.
They'll get some more support in those endeavors, but they wish to continue.
Yeah, but I, my reason for bringing it up is that Diane will still get some recognition at those two major public events. So I think, I think it's a good blend of, of services. And I believe that because this is an actual intermunicipal agreement, that the Select Board has to vote to approve entering this agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think on, on the agenda packet, it says vote to authorize the town administrator to sign. But it looks like Walpole, each individual Select Board member signed. So I think you should follow that suit and, 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 you know, vote to sign this evening, but actually have you all sign in person.
And so if that's the case, does everyone have to sign? Like, do we have to wait for Paul to sign? Or does it only require?
Majority, we need three of you to, to sign to, we just need you to vote tonight, if you so desire, and then three of you to sign. At least three of you to sign.
And Jeremy, this IMA is not specific to the person who's in place in that in my role now. It's between the towns. So when a, if a, if a person leaves the position, the three towns will collaborate on hiring a new person? Is that how it will work?
That's correct. That's correct. And Walpole would take the lead on that hiring process. It's a Walpole employee. But yes, Medfield and Sherburne would be involved in that hire. We don't anticipate that to be the case. We, we've met with the, the Veteran Services Officer that would service us. And he seems extremely excited and looking forward to, to doing outreach in Sherburne. So.
All right. Okay, any motions or further comments relative to this?
Yes, I would move that we approve the intermunicipal agreement for Veterans Services and that we come in and sign the agreement.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. Very good. Okay, home stretch here, Select Board reports. I started to talk about this last time, and then we put it more officially in writing on the agenda here. I'd like people's thoughts on some hybrid format, when to go hybrid format. Yeah, also I think about it, there's some meeting in early February, I think it's gonna have a lot of legal aspects to it. So I don't know if that would be a convenient one. January twenty-third, how does the agenda look on January twenty-third? I'm trying to think, will it be easy? What will be conducive to a hybrid meeting? Maybe one where there's less audience involvement? What are people's thoughts? Well, first, is there an interest to move to a hybrid format? I do believe at some point, I don't know how sustainable this is forever, you know, is, is this the future? Are we gonna be doing this in five years?
I think we will be, but I guess one thing I would add to this discussion, just for my day job, Mass General is reinstituting their masking now. They've seen such an uptick in both the flu and COVID that they're not requiring patients, you know this from Becky already, probably not requiring patients to wear masks, but they're encouraging them to. But they're requiring their staff to wear masks in an ongoing basis when they're interacting with patients or in the kind of, so that, you know, I don't think that this isn't dependent on that, because we can create this policy and then decide when to implement it, I guess is what I would say. And so maybe we wait till spring when people aren't locked up in their houses all the time, but.
Okay, later in the season.
Yeah, but, but I think it's a good thing to try. I definitely would like it to be hybrid, because we have a lot of seniors that
Absolutely.
Makes it much easier for them to listen in. And they, they're frequent voters. And also because it really helps presenters, because they can dial in from home. If they're the fifth one on the agenda, they don't have to sit in town hall for an hour and a half waiting for us to get to their agenda item.
There's no point, there's no point. I, I have no question. I have no, I have no desire to go back to zero, like like no Zoom, like is there, what do you call it? Just pure in-person. In fact, I think that actually misses some of the transparency and everything else like that, to be honest with you. So what do people think of like the, kind of later in, in the March, March timeframe, stuff like that? I'd just be interested in people's thoughts. If no one wants to do it, I won't push any further. I just there's something about the in-person experience. There really is. There's something about the discussion, something about this kind of like the communication level. And maybe it's just me. Does anyone have an idea of what, what other Select Boards are doing in other communities?
Eric, if, if caucus is on the, the night of March sixth, and you also have a meeting that night, that might be a meeting that you might go hybrid.
Okay.
It would be a shorter meeting possibly, so that you would be open for caucus.
Yeah. Shorter, maybe earlier too. We'll see if I have it there. What caucus you start so late, like what, seven-thirty or something like that?
It's eight, I believe.
Is it eight? Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
We ended at seven-thirty so we could get over there every year when we had to go.
Yeah, I remember that.
As I noted in our caller today, Eric, you know, Advisory met in person last night.
Yeah.
Jeremy, tell us, it was a pretty lengthy meeting, but so they're already meeting. Dan can elaborate, but they're already meeting in person.
Yeah, Dan, how, how are you? How's that working out?
Yeah, so there was a pretty strong desire on Advisory when we started, you know, our season in the fall to do in-person meetings. So we're doing hybrid in, in, in your meeting room. And it, it, it's working pretty well. I think occasionally, if someone's sitting in the audience, people on Zoom have trouble seeing and sometimes hearing people in the audience. You have to be careful about, we have to be careful about where microphones are and where people are speaking. It is a little challenging for whoever is managing the meeting to manage both a Zoom part of the meeting and the in-person part of the meeting. But I would say overall, it's, it's worked, it's worked reasonably well. And I think we benefited from some of the side conversations that happened before and after the meeting. I was also gonna slip in just a really quick comment. Jeremy presented the budget roll-up that you saw at Advisory last night. And I just wanted to kind of chime in to say, it was just, it was fabulous. It was wonderful that he did that. And incredibly helpful for Advisory for sort of getting us started on our, our budget review season with the big picture in view. So just wanted to share that with everybody, too.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. Absolutely.
What's the microphone setup right now in that, in that meeting room? I know there's the big room mic up on the ceiling, but did you, do you guys have table mics as well?
There is one table mic on the, like the, the table where the board sits behind. So there are, there are two mics now. Apparently that's the maximum number of microphones that can be used according to clause for that particular setup. But I guess the, the one thing that when folks are having meetings, and, and just like you used to need to do before, when you, you know, use, you know, the video and TV, you would have speakers from the audience go up and talk at a microphone. You, you might need to do something a little similar to that. At least get somebody a little closer to that microphone on the table.
The mic on the table, is that an omnidirectional mic?
It is, yeah. So if they're speaking towards it and if they're, they're nearby, it's pretty sensitive. But if somebody's in the back of the room raising their hands and, and it may not pick up. So it's kind of incumbent on the, you know, whoever's running the meeting to, you know, recognize the speaker, maybe have them come forward to a spot to, to speak.
Yeah, that's really my main concern. That's my main concern with the hybrid meetings is the, you know, when, when random people are talking from different parts of the room, it can be pretty difficult to hear them for the people that are remote. So that's, that's really my main concern.
So before, I'm gonna recognize Marion. Before I recognize Marion, I'm gonna ask, was it recorded? So can I go look at it and kind of see how the quality came out?
It was, it was recorded. And just to follow on, there's the challenge of kind of random voices and do they get picked up by the mic? There's also the issue that people on Zoom can't tell who's speaking unless it's somebody right at the table. So I didn't do such a great job of this last night. But very important for, you know, people to identify themselves before they speak.
Marion, your hand was raised when you put it down.
It was, yeah, it was. Somebody else put it down. The automatic, put down, put it down. But I, I would second the comments concerning the problems in hearing people. And when a person from the audience speaks, which is most of the public input that we get at those meetings, because the people who are most interested and have things to say from the public are the ones who come to the meeting room. The people on Zoom can only see the backs of their heads. So you lose something there. So if we can come up with some solutions to those audibility problems, I think it would be good to have in-person meetings, but I must say, Zoom does have some pretty big advantages. So it's a little.
You know what I miss? I miss, like I said, side conversations. I miss afterwards. We all are each other's neighbors, sometimes friends. And like, you know, you'd, we'd go to like fireside after a meeting with someone, meet up, or talk about something. I really miss that social interaction. We live almost this avatar-type life, you know what I mean? Or just.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. That's true.
Another thing that we probably have to, you know, when we used to meet in person, we would show the slides on the overhead projector there. I think it's a little harder if we're on Zoom to see that if someone's using slides, they'll be on the big screen. You know, versus sitting here with your laptop and you can see the slides, you know, very closely.
Maybe the placement of the screen is something I was thinking. Right now it's kind of back. If you put it, because the camera's also on the screen, so somehow it's on the side. You can catch the board, you can catch the audience, the audience can see the screen. Maybe something like that can be kind of adjusted.
Yeah, that's just, it's not an obstacle, but just something we need to consider is what I'm saying.
Apparently it's set up such that, in that, that room is set up such that the, both the big screen, you know, the roll-down screen and the large TV actually are mirrored. They show the same thing.
Oh, all right.
If you're running a meeting via Zoom and presenting, that presentation goes on both screens. So, which is nice, because if, you know, you're, depending on where you're facing, you're, you're facing one or the other.
Let me ask Dan something. Dan, the, the bloody Saturday, we all burned an entire Saturday together in one glorious pre-town meeting meeting. What is that? And is that gonna be, you think, some of the hybrid format? Because that's your guys' meeting that we attend.
It is, it is Saturday, March twenty-second. And it's still under discussion whether that would be Zoom or hybrid. I have some concerns about, despite the preference of many on the committee to do things in person, some concerns about doing a hybrid meeting for all the reasons that we've talked about, because public participation is very important. And if all people can see and hear is the back of somebody's head, it will be, you know, could be challenging. Potentially easier to manage on Zoom than hybrid, but haven't made a decision about that yet. So that's still to come.
Okay. Okay, so I'll leave it as a TBD, but I, I just want the ability to talk about this in future meetings. And maybe I do consider something. I was gonna do something soon in February, but people are worried about it if, you know, whatever virus levels are high right now. Maybe it is something more like in March, something like that. I would like to do it before the turnover of the board, to be honest with you, before I leave this chair. All right, without any further, any more discussion? Okay, Town Administrator Reports. And if Jeremy, if you don't mind, you can please do those Sherburne Waters District last. So Jeremy, so Stephen can close the meeting after that, after I guess step off.
Just a brief update on the Sustainability Coordinator. We've received a number of resumes and, and are currently vetting those. That's the Shared Sustainability Coordinator with the Town of Holliston. Unfortunately, over the holiday break, I heard word that Holliston's Town Administrator has accepted a new job as the Commissioner of the Cannabis Commission for the Commonwealth. So sad to see Travis move on to other endeavors, but that won't impact our ability to share the Sustainability Coordinator, but sad to see him go. So just a brief update there, vetting applicants for that position, along with our Holliston peers. And then just a reminder from Jeannie that the 2024 Annual Town Reports, all those drafts from various town committees and boards are due to her by February seventeenth, so that she can compile that and have the annual report published prior to town meeting.
The change in Holliston's Town Administrator there, was that, is that putting any of this at risk or not really? You think it's all?
What's that, Eric?
Will it put any of this at risk? Our, our agreement with the change of Town Administrator?
No, it doesn't. And that, that agreement was already voted by the Select Board in Holliston. It's, it's, that's, the agreement's in place. He was a good partner, so.
Yeah, I, I met with him, one of the B, that's right. He seemed pretty good. I liked it. I assume his first day there is gonna be April twentieth. All right. I guess that's it for me. So I'm gonna step off and you can talk about the Water District. Thank you, everyone, and I hope you had a good New Year.
Same to you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, see you.
Thanks. Yeah, and the last update, as you all know, the governor signed Sherburne Special Legislation to enact the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. So that is now an official entity codified under Chapter two seventy-four of the Acts of two thousand twenty-four of the Commonwealth. Next steps for the board and maybe. Next steps for the board and maybe an agenda item at your next meeting is appropriate to talk about how you would like to appoint an interim commission. And there's some, some timely things as far as finalizing, negotiating, finalizing the IMA agreements that the commission would be a party to, as well as the select board would be a party to. So I think some, some conversations at your next meeting may be timely on how you would like to go about appointing an interim commission. The special legislation gives the select board the ability to appoint an interim commission of five members. You know, prior to having the final configuration, which is spelled out in the legislation. That's my brief updates for the evening.
Great. Well, I will entertain a motion relative to this meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
I will second that.
All right, we're, we're back to a three-member select board here. All right, we'll take a vote. Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
And I'm I as well. Thank you.
The Bruins are down by two goals, so turn your TVs on.
Thank you. Take care.
Ciao, guys. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks.